And the Black of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands my nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the open public law cap, chapter 231 as of notice of this meeting has been provided to the flowers. On January 12th, 2017, notice was sent to the home instruction, Star Ledger, local source, and the square for the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items of this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed with the regularly scheduled monthly coordinating under the sunshine. This is Viviana, present. This is Burge, here. This is Huda, here. Mr. Marchuzzi, here. Mr. Tapaleski, here. This is Bolani, here. Mr. Worrath, here. Mr. Alvarez, here. Mr. Calviss, here.
Okay, this type approval of the minutes, last meeting.
Salute.
Second. This is Viviana, yes. This is Burge, yes. This is Huda, yes. Mr. Marchuzzi, yes. Mr. Tapaleski, yes. This is Bolani, yes. Mr. Worrath, yes. Mr. Alvarez, yes. Mr. Calviss, yes.
All right, this time we'll open up our first section of comments from the public for agenda items only. Anybody who should come up to podium. Jane, let's move on to our reports. This time I would like to ask Dr. Otozzi for a superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations on your first official meeting.
My thank you.
This evening, I'd like to begin with our monthly HIV report. Last month, or excuse me, this month, we had 12 incidents reported. Three of those were validated as being HIV incidents, five were not, and four were determined. The actions taken include counseling, office detention, and in one case, a student was moved to a different school. In all instances, the victims were counseled. Just wanted to take a moment tonight to recognize Phillips 66, all of the board knows and the public does, a major company in Linden who continuously supports our school. On the agenda tonight, the board will vote to accept $115,000 donation to purchase full option science kits in our middle schools. These new science kits are aligned to the next generation science standards and the New Jersey science standards, and will help our teachers to continue to engage in effective science instruction that's really up to date and timely. It's a lot of money, and now it's a multi-million dollar corporation, but $115,000 is a lot of money to equip our middle schools with brand new, state-of-the-art curriculum, and I just want to thank Phillips 66 publicly. In addition, tonight, I want to recognize two of our staff members, Ms. Cindy Appelinski and Ms. Aubrey Dollar, who applied for an NEA, the National Education Association. They applied for an NEA foundation, learning and leadership grant. And each year, the NEA awards learning and leadership grants to individuals to fund participation in high-quality professional development. Ms. Appelinski, who's our district science elementary specialist, and Ms. Dollar, who's a school sixth, third grade teacher, received $5,000 for the elementary next generation science standards professional learning community grant that they wrote. They are both going to lead a study group of teachers who are going to construct scientific explanations and engage in argumentation on the science standards. And they're going to receive really high-quality professional development. And thanks to the fact that two of our teachers took that upon themselves to write a grant, and for their efforts, they received $5,000 for the district. So congratulations to Ms. Appelinski. One other thing I'm very proud of, and I just want to discuss a couple of groups of board members. Tonight, the board is going to vote on the approval of opening a before-care program at our elementary schools effective in September of 2017. Just this year, our district, I think, very successfully implemented an after-school after-care program. As of today, we have 286 students who are in this after-care program. Since then, and since we implemented the after-care and probably much before that, I've had parents approach me, and several board members have asked if we could do a before-care program. I'm happy to say that we're finally prepared to do it. We have the staff in place to do it, and we have the need for it. So I'm happy that tonight the board has the opportunity to vote on approving this program. I think that we'd really great for those working parents who have to leave early in the morning, have no place to bring their kids. So hoping the board will vote on that and approve that tonight. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Otozzi. This time, we move into curriculum instruction. Ms. Viviana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The curriculum and instruction committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following urgent motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item 1 through 10 deal with approval of specialized program for replacement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payments for related services as per child studying team evaluations, the approval of home instruction, determination of related services, the approval and termination of transportation services, and the approval of speech services. Items 11 and 12 approve home instruction services provided by outside agencies. Item 13 approves the team sports schedules for spring 2017 season. 14 grants approval to spring waiting room hours. 15 amend board action on past CNI reports. 16 grants permission for use of facilities and school activities. 17 approve district field trucks. 18 approves training for district staff. 19 authorizes for regalia riding. 20 approves 21st century community learning centers summer STEM academy. 21 approves level 1 lunchtime catering at school 5. 22 supports the administration of the access staff for ESL students. 23 authorizes the administration of ID examinations on the dates listed. 24 approve pre-K kids arrangement city roundup days. 25 approves edutire courses for 12th grade students. 26 approve the school self-assessment for determining grades under the anti-bullying bill of rights act for all Linden public schools.
Ms. Viviana, if I could interrupt you there for that item, we need to do a report on that very briefly and a public discussion. As required by the New Jersey School Assessment for HIV, each of our schools in the district completed self-assessment on our implementation of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. While completing the self-assessment, we learned that our school district has demonstrated strength in reducing the number of confirmed HIV investigations. Our average score on the self-assessment was a 69, which is above the state average. At this time, Mr. President, would you open up very public comment on that?
Yes, anybody who should come to podium, now the time. I'm saying that.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item 27 approves submission of 2016 ESBA accountability action plan chances for participation rate at accounting superintendent. 28 grants approval to apply for the 21st century community learning center grant for 2017-18 school year. 29, 30, 31, approval for Spain programs through Spain, Italy, and China. Item 32 proclaim the month of February as last history month to be recognized and celebrated in the Linden public schools. And item 33 approve superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as discussed at the January 5th, 2017, regular meeting. Mr. President, I would report on instruction and item 33, we asked for a second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Vocal.
Ms. Viviana, yes. This is Burge, yes. This is Huda, yes. Mr. Marchuzzi, yes. Mr. Tapaleski, yes. Ms. Bolani, yes. Mr. Worrath, yes. Mr. Alvarez, yes. Mr. Calviss, yes.
Yes, however, you've stated number 18. Okay, we'll move into management operations. Ms. Huda.
Thank you, Mr. President. The management operations committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, presents the following 35 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. The first one is the retirement. That approved.
Thank you, Ms. Huda. Bittersweet moment to see Mary Jane, the topess is going to retire. Mary Jane's out in the audience tonight. We often see her at our board meetings. She's worked for the Linden Board of Education for 25 years, started her career in 1991, most strong core of aides at school number four. Since then, she's worked at schools 10, and she now ends her full-time career with us at school number two. Mary Jane came to meet with me last week, we had a nice little chat, and in her letter, she wrote that she will miss working with my students. And it's her presence for and her advocacy of our students, which is really incomparable. She has served as a mother to children that attend to our schools, a role model, and support system for so many as an aide, as a paraprofessional, and as a medical muscle. Someone also called me that she's a guardian, and it doesn't surprise me because she has sown so many seeds of goodness for our students. So Mary Jane, you will be absolutely impossible to replace, and I want to thank you for your years of service to our district.
Mary Jane, over the years, we've lived each other on various occasions, and I too have to echo Dr. Otozzi's words. We're really good initiatives, and it was wonderful, wonderful time, and a long one. Okay, at this time, I confirm.
Yeah, number two is to amend board action on past management operations, two boards as listed. Numbers three, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35 are all appointments. Number four is to accept the following resignation of the following staff. Number five is to approve the following transfer of the following staff. Number six are leave of absences. Number seven is to compensate staff for sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Number eight is to approve salaries from the 2017 IDA basic grant as listed. Number nine is to approve the payment of salaries for the 2017 IDPA preschool grant as listed. Number 10 is to amend funding for the staff of title 1A, title 2A, and title 3 to read as follows below. And, Mr. President, I approve items 1 through 35, and I just have to leave for a second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Vocal, please.
Ms. Viviana, yes. Mr. Burge, yes. Ms. Huda, yes. Mr. Marchuzzi, yes. Mr. Tapaleski, yes. Ms. Bolani, yes. Mr. Worrath, yes. Mr. Alvarez, yes.
I'm sorry, yes, I accept, I'm staying from item number 21 and item number 6.
Mr. Calviss.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to support operations. Mr. Alvarez.
The support operations committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the superintendent of world secretary, present the following motions to Linden Board of Education for approval. Item 1, view result of the Board of Education set the business administrator world secretary certification as of December 31st, 2016, no question 39 item on campus in conferences for payments which in total seek amount appropriate by the board application pursuant to NJC 6A23-2411. View result of the board application pursuant to NJC 6A23-2411, and review of world secretary's monthly financial reports. And upon consultation with local district officials to advise that to the best of our knowledge, no major account or bond has been over-expended in relation of NJC 6A23-211. If sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial needs for the remainder of the fiscal year. item 3 approve secretary's board for the month of 7016. Item 4 authorize board secretary to do warrants for salaries, for the salaries of the members of the board for the month of 7016. Item 5 authorize board secretary to do warrants in the amount specified in favor of the person's name. Item 6 approve the list of transfers and adjustments for the month of 7016. Item 7 approve directory report for the month of December 7016. Item 8 approve student tuition support for the month of December 7016. And item 9, no man, board actions on management as follows. All right, item 10, accept the funds in amount of $80,000 from Philip 66, or 6 and 7 and 3 full option science system, pitch for mechanics to sole middle school. Accept the funds in amount of $35,000 from Philip 66, or first of 77th grade full option science system kits for mechanics to sole middle schools. Accept funds in amount of $10,000 for Rutgers-Gerson Futures Institute for the promotion, enhancement, and expansion of our science program. 13, accept funds in amount of $1,100 for a continuum USA support Linden High School process knowledge program. Accept funds in amount of $800 from County Union for use of district schools for 2016 and '17. Accept additional funding in amount of $639 in the chapter 1 and 2 for 2016-17 school year. Accept funds from the Panda, Arrow, and C Street Conventures for presenting loyalty from the sale of Arrow for accessories there at Linden School of Hours. 17, accept funds in amount of $2,000 to that $2,000 from Rutgers University to Sadoray for district participation in 2015-16 New Jersey school risk and protective factors survey. 18, accept funds in amount of $50,000 from Howard Correctionary to support superintendent's scholarship fund. 19, accept funds from the State of New Jersey for regional legislation for student reimbursement as follows. 20, accept the funds in amount of $5,000 for incentive compliance with the offer, which was created for 7th, 2016. 21, accept the donation of hardy supplies from Rutgers University for student repives to cultivate student lack of hardy initiative. Item 22, approve the 2015-16 carryover funds of IDA 2016-17 as follows. 23 approve the Linden Board of Education sponsor before school program for students attending school 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, and 10 from August, September of 2017. Parents will pay for service, and it will be managed through the enterprise fund. Approve the enrollment of the following students for the remainder of 2016-17 school year, eligible on a tuition basis on the district policy number 5118. Approve the enrollment of following students for 2017-18 school year, eligible on a tuition basis on the district policy number 15118, pending enrollment figures. Item 26 approve the following resolution, view result of Linden Board of Education hereby terminate lease with property severance, ex executor of the state of moving, taking, disease, and down the rank individually in doing business as they do associates. Set termination to be expected at August 31st, 2017. And the board hereby advise the business initiative to work with the board's facilities council to provide a notice of termination as required at least, and take such other orders as necessary in connection with termination. 27, approve the following resolution, Linden Board of Education, these industries are desirable, in the legislature to the school district to acquire a certain property located on Act 224, 226, 228, and 230 East Allen Street in the state of Linden, County Union, New Jersey, also known as lots 29.03, 29.04, 29.05, 29.06, Lot 26 currently owned by Budinex LLC. And due to the need for additional parking spaces for school district employees, the intended use of the property shall be integration all base parking lots. Now, according to the draft, the board hereby authorize the purchase of the property from Budinex LLC for a price of $725,000 and no sense. And the board advises facilities council to prepare the contract of sale and forward sentence to council for Budinex LLC. And the board advises superintendent, business administrator, to work with the board's facilities council to take any and all steps necessary to rectory the purchase of the property, including without limitation, execution of the contract of any liars thereto, and obtain all local county and state rules necessary for the purchase of the property for its intended use as a parking lot and, that upon due, and upon Budinex LLC approval, man execution of the contract, sale. The board authorize the board president to execute the contract of sale and any liars thereto. Authorize the business administrator world secretary to submit the circuitary's reports to the period ending, ended December 31st, 2016, to the executive union county superintendent of schools. You plan to follow the surface equipment in accordance with the district policy 30 to 60 as follows. In accordance with NJC 6A23-8-14, 21, the business administrator for secretary to withdraw. $1,025,000 from the Capital Reserve transfer to the Capital College one, it was purchased of land at numbers 224, 226, 228, 230, including Linden Jersey to preserve the parking lot for sole middle school on same. Approve lease purchase agreement with Apple Inc. here in Texas, master lease agreement for a period of 30 years in a total amount of $980,422. Approve contract in amount of $185,410 to 30th, with the corporation, Union and Beach, New Jersey, for a mechanics middle school auditorium pick team with pricing picks all the industrial service commission of New Jersey cooperative pricing system bid 1.5 slash 61. Now, facility board. I'm going to amend the board action as part of operation for. Use facilities at no charge as requested by Dr. Robert Otozzi, superintendent. Use of facilities at no charge as requested by Y Norrie, principal of Linden High School. Use facilities at no charge as requested by I Sosa, vice principal director of Sole Middle School. Use facilities at no charge requested by E Primal, principal of the mechanics middle school. Use facilities at no charge requested by R Malero, principal of Sole Middle School. Use facilities at no charge requested by A Perkins, principal number two. Use facilities at no charge as requested by Anthony Adeline, principal school number four. Use facilities at no charge as requested by L Scamadella, principal school number five. Use facilities at no charge as requested by M Rodriguez, principal number eight. Use facilities at no charge as requested by S Canelys, principal number 10. Use facilities at no charge as requested by T Brissette, president, school number six, PTA. Use facilities at no charge as requested by E Hernandez, president, school number nine, PTA. And use facilities as service charge as requested by E Lina Luna, municipal assistant, New Jersey club. Mr. President, the score of operations 1 through 32, facilities 1 through 14, and you simply ask for a second. If I am, sorry, I have 1 through 32.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, may I have vocal?
Ms. Viviana, yes. This is Burge, yes. This is Huda, yes. Mr. Marchuzzi, yes. Mr. Tapaleski, yes. Ms. Bolani, yes. Mr. Worrath, yes. Mr. Alvarez, yes. Mr. Calviss, yes.
All right, we're moving on to planning and policy. Mr. Worrath.
Upon recommendation of the superintendent, I submit the following 13 policies for approval. The 1330, use of school facilities, updating the definition of school use to include electronic smoking devices. 3100, budget planning and preparation, added section on budget adoption and submission, budget hearing, other modification of budget, and appropriation of funds to be more consistent with the law. 3510, operation and maintenance of plant, added the last sentence regarding equal bodies free access to school facilities. 3515, smoking prohibition, updating definition of smoking to include electronic devices. 3542.1, local wellness and nutrition, added the third paragraph to refer to the district goal, added sections completing review, triennial assessment, principal activities, record keeping requirements, marketing, and added the last section title of the general school district department. 1120, board of educational meetings, revised policy related to public reporting requirements, added information on school performance, with the work generally targets, and added section title of school report card. 2131, superintendent, added more details related to the evaluation process, added quantitative and or qualitative numeric criteria, and added information regarding the performance of contractual duties. 2240, research, evaluation, and planning, added in section title of school level planning, title of section change to planning at the school level, revise that line, date, and timeframe throughout the section. 4112.2, certification, revised to be more aligned with statutes and code. 4112.4/4212.4, disability health, added content on examination for cause. 4112.6/4212.6, personnel records, reconstructed of the policy, and added content on the record requirements of machine NJ. 5111, admission, added the section title of homeless people for the requirements of ESSA. 5118.2, foster care and educational stability, this is a new policy in order to comply with the requirements of ESSA. Mr. President, I respectfully move the 13th planning policies and answer for a second.
Second.
Okay, questions, comments? May I have vocal, please?
Ms. Viviana, yes. This is Burge, yes. This is Huda, yes. Mr. Marchuzzi, yes. Mr. Tapaleski, yes. Ms. Bolani, yes. Mr. Worrath, yes. Mr. Alvarez, yes. Mr. Calviss, yes.
All right, this time we'll be moving on to reports of the special committees. All right, the state delegate, Mr. Tapaleski.
Thank you, Mr. President. The delegate assemblyman on December 10th, Mercer County College, we agree we received directions by both Don Wester, Bertini, and J SBA, and Dr. Robert Otozzi, executive director. There was a report by a study, commission recommending some changes in the New Jersey School Board's rules of governance, which I'll address later. The biggest thing that they emphasized was that the budget, the dues have not raised for the budget in the last eight years. And one of the reasons for that is the fact that they have made tremendous strides in raising money from private donors. It's a group called Health Educational Leadership Foundation. And so, Mr. Marchuzzi is having in March a weekend of planning that's all paid for by private funds. School boards doesn't use any of that money. Not that money comes from school boards. Or dues, sorry. The dependence on counties is up over 70 percent. And part of that has to do with the programs that involve training, and a lot of the school board members don't get trained. School board also pointed out the school board has a tremendous relationship with the United States Army, and will continue to work with them to improve achievement. We had the army here and discussed some programs that we might be able to bring into the school that are free from the US Army. And it has nothing to do with high school and recruiting, it just has to do with making sure the kids get the training, learning that the army needs, they need for the future. A lot of this stuff is all hacked going out, and we're looking for those people, the work behind the scenes. There also, at the recent workshop, at the end of October, there was a big emphasis on bringing students to the workshops, and they increased the number of students that were there. Some of you may have seen the SAM pack, which they ran in the mall, and they're recruiting. Uh, and they're look, recruiting now the teams back here. Uh, teams, uh, actually developed, uh, products and stuff like that. They presented like, uh, Sharp Pack. And two, I believe they chose two groups, uh, and actually on, on there's videos of the presentation on the school board's website. Uh, a new initiative called Future Great Schools is, uh, is being added to Sustainable, uh, New Jersey. Uh, at that point, my, uh, Vice President Jason Justice took over and, uh, we took some regular business. Uh, we, New Jersey School Board voted to change rules regarding executive board members running, uh, for partisan protocol office. And it just doesn't have a law hold it, just deals with people that are executive board members of New Jersey School Boards. And what it does is it boards tend to resign their positions if they're running in a partisan election. There's still a board member in their office school, but not executive board house. Um, in addition, there was a poli, it was an addition of policy language regarding the change, uh, changing the verdict proof or changes in special ed students' I D Ps. Uh, there was a, uh, quite a bit of discussion. They wanted the discussion to go on even longer, uh, but fortunately, we, uh, in the two thirds of, they said the discussion would be defeated. Uh, it, it would seem that it was going to be a close vote. Basically, what this does is, as a parent, if I object to the I D or want my child's I D changed to a law that the school recommended, the way it goes now, school has to defend their position. Uh, I don't have to do anything as a parent. And what this is saying is, you know, as a parent, if you think you should change, you need to tell us why you should change. You know, because how, you defend something you already did, it's very difficult. So, as a result, it passed, uh, with a seventeen percent exit vote. It seemed like it was going to be a lot closer, but it carried a great handle. Uh, a notice was issued of all board members, uh, on December sixth. And there's also been a second notice regarding the resolutions cutoff date. Uh, so if you plan on proposing a resolution to change school boards, uh, the information needs to be submitted by March seventh. So that was something that we, we would need to do with board if we had some idea, uh, something that we wanted to change. The resolution subcommittee, which I'll remember, uh, meets on Saturday, April eighth. After April eighth, if, if, uh, you want to make a change to the resolutions, you have to go on emergency resolution. And it's a big long ordeal. Uh, the next delegate assembly, uh, is May twentieth. Uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Avileski. County delegate, Mrs. Suak?
Uh, there's only to be a county meeting in February, in the time? Oh, actually, the educational center on Orchard Towers and everything. Uh, I believe it's April thirty, thirty.
Ed?
Ed.
Ed. Uh, the educational services committee, um, the superintendent chair of that, I'll be going to the meeting next Wednesday. So I'll report next time. Um, E S T prepares. Mrs. Burge?
Thank you, Mr. Martucci. We held our parent E S T meeting on January eleventh at six thirty P M at the board office. We had twelve moms and two dads in attendance. At various times throughout the evening, we had board members that also attended, Mr. Avileski, and Mr. Martucci, Mrs. Bolani, Mr. O'Ra, and myself. Uh, we had representation from schools one, two, six, eight, nine, Soul, MacManus, and High School. Uh, there were some concerns, we had a parent, that was a concern about scheduling conflict in the middle school between choir and orchestra. Um, the child is getting choir, they could not take orchestra, or vice versa, the child is getting orchestra, they could not take choir. Um, this was actually a scheduling conflict on our part, and we were able to resolve the situation by allowing the students to alternate between classes. So, uh, we're happy to say that I, that it was resolved, and I believe the students are very happy. Uh, we had, had that way some concerns about, uh, basic issues in one of the buildings. The situation is being addressed by the building principal. Uh, we're at Soul Six, we're being aware of some issues with the world restaurants. Seats and toilets aren't working. It was brought to maintenance attention, and the situation has been resolved. At MacManus, it was brought to our attention that there were some seats that had already some things already done then. Uh, we have the maintenance aware of the issues, and it is being addressed. I'd also like you to know that in renewing some projects, it's brought to our attention that MacManus sort of turns on this, this funding summers to be regulated. Uh, there were some concerns about interim reports coming home with failing marks, but there were no comments on the report cards from the teachers as to why the student was failing. It's a general rule amongst administration that the teacher is to put a failing mark on an interim report, he or she is expected to comment. It's also administration's expectation that if the parent has received the report card and there are failing marks and comments, that this is not the first time that they are being made aware of the situation. That the teachers are making contact with them and making them aware that the child is in danger of failing. There should be some kind of communication between the parent and teacher before that interim report does come home. Uh, there were concerns brought up about Montoni and the lunches in the schools. Parents are saying that the children are not getting served what's on the menu for that day. Um, so for instance, it was a meatball sub, that they were getting spaghetti and meatballs. Uh, we spoke with Montoni, and they expressed to us that in some cases, yes, it is happening, but the reason it's happening is because maybe the delivery wasn't made, and they couldn't prepare what's on the menu. Or something might have went bad, that they were supposed to prepare that day, so they had to go to an alternate. Um, we're, we want to make sure that the children are getting the best product, um, that they have. So, um, with that being said, we're going to, um, ask Montoni to come and see at one of our future coming meetings, so that the parents can actually get to see for them. Uh, there were some concerns about breakfast at the schools. Uh, the parents saying the children aren't getting enough time to eat their breakfast, and they're getting rushed. Um, breakfast is not, um, served in every building, but if you're bringing your child, please, you have to understand that they will allow your child to eat, they're going to give them some time to eat. But we also need to make sure that the children are getting to class and starting the day with the rest of your classmates, and starting that day on time. So, you're not, not getting their breakfast, it's just that they don't have the full amount of time that breakfast would get. Um, silent munches is another concern that was raised, and that was discussed with each building principal, and it's being addressed. Uh, parents asked to have the board meetings as well as the E S T meetings on email last. I know we've been getting the reception, I've been getting it myself, so I'm very happy for those reminders. Um, school nine had a concern about a security camera at their front door. It wasn't working properly, and it was hard for the seat who was standing, um, at the door. So, they are going to be ordering a new camera to replace that camera that's not functioning properly. Uh, there were some other issues and concerns raised by parents. We want these issues and concerns, our list is superintendent. He is looking into each and every one of the concerns and issues. Uh, some have been resolved as of today, and others are still being addressed. And, um, I would just like to say it was a pleasure to sit down with the parents and have a conversation with them. Please come out and join us for our next parent E S T. I know it's a statement of reverence at six thirty at the board office. We have given our parents from other schools and discussion feedback about our district. We will also be offering a brief presentation in the beginning of our meeting about Genesis, and how you as a parent can access it and be able to use it as a great tool to see our child to do on a daily basis in school. We'd love to see you there. We will have light recollections, and that concludes our report.
Okay, that's our report. All right, um, the next report will be the E S T, students at the high school. Mr. O'Ra?
Okay, just warning you, we had our student E S T attendants with Mr. Paulus, Mr. Martucci, um, Mrs. Burge, and myself. We had three sophomores, two juniors, and four seniors, along with their advisors, Mr. Stevens and Ms. Lewis. Um, the students had several, um, concerns about Montoni, um, the department needing lunch, that the lunch is very long, by the time they get their food, they have to scuffle it down really quickly. Um, they were wondering if there was a way that we might be able to make their lunches a little bit longer, but definitely inform them that the teachers' lunches are having a change and everything was just being, um, extremely complicated. Um, they are saying that their bowl cuts, um, are getting better on their lunch, uh, on their lunches. Um, and they're also serving carrots and cucumbers, um, with their food, which the students are happy about. They admitted, um, that they're now serving chicken and fries in the snack line, which they like too. Um, so if you don't want to have the wait on the long line to hop, you can go to the snack line and get there. Um, they did have several complaints that some of the workers weren't wearing gloves or hairnets. Um, so we have to speak to Montoni about that. Um, the new, uh, T V that runs over the cafeteria, some students said that, uh, they're either not working or they're not on. So they were wondering if there's a way to help them that. Um, there are new chicken wings in the cafeteria, and the students have only given three chicken wings, and they're asking if there's a way that if they're working, they're going to settle off. Um, there's a pretty much, oh, there was another, um, student who had concerns that their table wasn't being wiped down in the, um, eight period lunch. And they were wondering if one of the students could just, uh, wipe the table down when they were constructing during the waiting for lunch. Um, that's it for the cafeteria. Um, some of the students are having complications with connecting the U two at home, or a lock, or whatever the case may be. And they're also unable to connect to Genesis at home. Um, as far as the building, they said that pretty very, um, simply, that they said that the bathrooms are disgusting. Um, and that there's puddles on the floor, there's no mirrors in some of the bathrooms, no trash cans, lock, soap, or paper towels in the room locker room. Um, the third floor bathroom, they said, reeks of smoke. Um, so they were wondering if there's anybody who walked there and see if there's any that go on in one of the bathrooms. And then there's also no screens in those windows in the bathroom, so maybe if they're there, they'll just smoke that up there, they said. Um, they love to repaint it in the hallway to decorate. They really like how it looks so far, and they said that they're doing a very good job of that. They love how the media center's open till seven, um, just to help society. Um, they also like, uh, the idea that they're exploring to create more school dances, such as the Valentine's Day of the Year. Um, and they also are looking to create in the Bad Valley, there's spring swimming teams and blades, and just everything that's on, concerning those, um, spring activities that's sometimes gone. The students that are involved in, uh, musicals are requesting if there's any type of practice that they're going to be able to get, because they feel like they're not advertised at all for being the Lord of the play, and it does give a lot of power that they go, um, to begin the play, uh, reality. Um, and our next meeting for the student E S T will be on Thursday, September sixteenth, in the Lynn High School Media Center at, uh, I believe, Wannaboo. Next, it, from the student E S T.
Thank you, Mr. O'Ra. Uh, E S T for the middle school, Mr. Avileski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, after the board meeting in, in the meeting, at the meeting on, uh, the middle school E S T was added. Uh, since then, I've had the both building principals. Uh, time frames is too short to get going, uh, to get a meeting in before the this month, uh, this month's meeting again. Uh, but I was in communication with both, uh, principals, uh, for a second time today, and their close to time lies in, in, uh, students have to serve on the committees. Uh, there will be five students, we meet at a level, we're total fifteen in each one. Uh, the plan right now, the tentative plan is to meet with the students on February fifteenth at both Soul and Mass, one before lunch, uh, in the morning, and one after lunch in the afternoon, and then flip and that's on the meeting. So that, uh, like I said, we break it up one more. So the kids don't miss too much of any one of the last, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, the E S T commissioner of education.
There was a meeting last Thursday, um, which I had unfortunately was not able to attend. Did you?
Yes, I was just, I wanted to thank you, I wanted to thank you, it's up to you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good.
I hear that.
All right. Um, we had one of our behaviorists from the special service board to come in and give a lesson on behavioral modification. And it was pretty informative. It was, uh, a good forty-five minutes long, um, it was a lot of questions and answers. She had a, uh, presentation, um, and I think everybody was there, came there with concerns, and hopefully left with some answers. So it was a productive evening. And, um, you know, I, I would rather attend the next time you have that, um, anybody who has any students who might be in the special ed program, or not, to come to this, because, um, there are interesting things that you can find out and things that you can help your children as well, so. That I'd pretty well conclude that. All right, just one question, do you have anything else? Yeah, that's a, he's getting a little bit, that's, it was okay. All right, this time, I'm going to finish business.
Mr. O'Ra, I have one thing, uh, meant to mention earlier. Uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, we have to have a, um, an extra board meeting in March to approve the tentative budget. Uh, because of the way the dates hold for when the budgets do and when our meetings are, we're going to have to have a special meeting, uh, so that the board can review and approve the tentative budget, so that, uh, this game over, then I can submit it to the calendar. So, we are hoping, uh, just let everybody check their calendars, if we can do it on March fifteenth. And if everybody agrees, we'll put that on the agenda in the February meeting to approve that. Is this clear?
It's already on the stage.
And that's already on the agenda. The February meeting's already changed, it's on the agenda. But this will be March fifteenth, four A M. Six o'clock for the board to approve the tentative budget. Should be short. Should, should be short, you know, relatively short again. This is not for the public budget here. This is for the board to review the budget, for the board to approve it. We will still, by law, be required to have our public budget hearing that will happen at the hall room. Hopefully, the March meeting, in the regular March meeting. So, okay with that? So we'll put that on the agenda February to approve that. Thanks.
All right, uh, this time, any board members have any comments, any new business to grab? Uh, Mr. Alvarez?
Yeah, I would like to give credit to our man, uh, basketball team, uh, Malibio. Ran sixteen in the nation, so great job to Coach Malibio, and keep it going for those kids.
Good job, I have to move on. All right.
Just to let the public know that the board, both superintendent, uh, are possibly, uh, looking into an avenue of reintroducing the athletic teams that existed in the middle schools for many, many years. And, uh, number of about seven years ago, due to the budget crunch mistake, they were all consolidated into one. But again, we don't know what our numbers are going to be for next year for the budget for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. We're waiting for a lot of things, but if that, we can do that, if we can be an herb, and being a middle school person for many, many years of coaching, I think that's a very important thing. But again, it's all financial and it's all numbers. If we can do that, and we'll possibly do that for next year for the school year of two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen.
Yes, uh, and I, with Mr. Martucci, um, those programs were really, really good years. Uh, you know, due to budgetary, uh, constraints, they had to be eliminated. If we could find money to do this, I think it would be the best thing our kids could have. Because we're sorely missing these, um, sports in the middle school. And we're hoping that eventually, we'll also be able to go down to the elementary schools and do what we used to do with, uh, interior replay between the different schools, so. This is just something to be thinking about. If, uh, money's there, and you pull it off, in the near future, do well. Okay?
All right, um, at this time, we'll move on to, uh, podium for any comments from the board. Everybody move on to say amen.